All right. I'd like to officially call to order the Planning Commission meeting of September 4th, 2025, and let the record reflect that Chair Ludden is absent and all other commissioners are present. Commissioner Barajas, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Gladly, thank you.
(inaudible)
Director Ackerman, will you please introduce our first item?
Yes, our first item is a capital improvement plan update, and Naz Mokaram, our CIP manager, is here this evening with a report.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm back here today to provide you with an update on our capital improvement program, or CIP, for the second quarter of 2025. So as you are well familiar with by now, our 2325 CIP includes 70 projects for a total budget of $36 million. At the end of the second quarter, as the end of the second quarter for 2025 also coincides with the end of the city's fiscal year, this will be the last update on the 2325 CIP. So let's start with the projects that have been completed since the last update. In the second quarter, Alton Traffic Signal Synchronization Program, or TSSP, and conference room teams upgrade throughout Civic Center campus were completed. We also have several parks projects completed, including Pittsburgh Park shade structure renovation. We also had the basketball courts at Foothill Ranch, Baker Ranch, and Borrego Parks restriped to accommodate pickleball courts, as well as we restriped the tennis court at Pittsburgh Park to accommodate two pickleball courts. Community Development Block grant funding, or CDBG, was used for our fourth phase of Audible Pedestrian Signal, or APS, project. As this phase, in this phase, we upgraded the APS buttons at 18 intersections. And this is the list of other projects previously completed in 2025 that were presented to you in more details in previous updates. In summary, 36 CIP projects were completed for about $20 million investment within the We also have 16 projects currently under construction. Zone D residential streets asphalt repairs is substantially complete. As part of this project, staff could also accommodate a full width asphalt resurfacing for the Kenyatta Road for the entire length from Dimension to Lake Forest. New street name signs are replaced, replaced the old street name signs throughout the entire city. This project is substantially complete as well. Staff is working on one last final change order to close out the project. We have also substantially completed Baker Ranch Community Park turf replacement and El Toro irrigation conservation projects. We are only working on some grant fund reimbursement for El Toro project at the moment. And we are using Lake Forest transportation mitigation, or LIFTON, funds for improving three intersections throughout the city. Rockville and Los Alises intersection improvements is almost complete. We will have the striping completed within the next two weeks. And Geronimo Lake Forest intersection and Rancho Lake Forest intersections, we did the crack sealing for those two locations today, actually. And the slurry seal is scheduled for next Thursday and Friday. So if you can, please avoid that area later next week. Bake in Rockville, TSSP, and Port Tola Santa Monica, TSSPs are also ongoing. And Bake-Tribuco widening, we finished the potholing, and contractor will be mobilizing by sometime next week. We issued NTP for this peak. We also have five different park improvement projects in different phases. Normandale Open Space Area renovation is substantially complete, and Heroes Park Sports Field renovations, we, the team is ramping up their efforts so they can open the fields to public as soon as possible. Heroes Park lighting, we are waiting for a couple of electrical boxes. We tentative schedule of installation this month, so we can wrap it up by next month. Restroom renovations, we've completed the painting. We are waiting for some fixtures. Once we get the fixtures, the second phase will start and we replace all the fixtures. Foothill Ranch box lacrosse rink installation, we anticipate construction later this year. We've also completed, or substantially completed, Sports Park Synthetic Turf Replacement. I have a short clip here which describes the steps, so we can take a look at that.
Lake Forest is investing in the future with 70 capital improvement projects and $36 million dedicated to parks, streets, and public spaces. One major upgrade is the full replacement of the synthetic turf fields at the Lake Forest Sports Park. Before installation, crews regraded the base to ensure a level and stable foundation that will last over a decade. The new turf is made of safe and durable polyethylene with recycled rubber infill to provide better cushioning and protection for athletes. After nearly 12 years of heavy use, the updated fields are now open and ready for summer games. Lake Forest is building better spaces for our community, one project at a time.
Very good. Now we are moving to projects in pre-construction. We have four different projects along the same stretch of El Toro Road from Geronimo to Tribuco, which we are bundling the construction together. This actually was awarded this Tuesday by council, so we'll be moving to construction by the next update. And then for the pickleball fans out there, we have one last pickleball court installation project at El Toro Park, where we are converting the existing sand volleyball court to pickleball courts, and we are planning to advertise this project soon. We also have several projects in design. We have four with traffic improvements features in design, as well as four additional park improvements. And on the street improvement side, we are working on Southwest Lake Forest arterial wall enhancements. With these, we have four projects in pre-design. Protected Permissive Left Turn Project is on hold till Alton TSSP is complete, and then it's going to be reevaluated. The other three projects are right now in community outreach, scope development, and we anticipate them moving to design by our next update. So in summary, 36 projects are complete from our program. We have 16 projects in construction, five projects are in pre-construction, nine projects in design, and four projects in pre-design. This concludes my report. Thank you for your time, and I'm available for any questions.
Have we received any comments from members of the public on this item?
I have not received any.
All right. Do any members of the Commission have any questions, comments, for discussion?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Got it.
So that's my favorite slide I think I've ever seen, was just the one a couple ago. So I appreciate that. Although it doesn't, it makes me look really old because it shows like my receding hairline really good, but it's all good. I did want to thank all the work that you guys have been doing with not only the CIPs, but specifically the traffic CIPs. As we continue to add more residents to this nice city, there's also more traffic that comes along with it. And it took a while for a lot of this stuff to get moving, but it's nice to see every quarter when you report out just the amount of widening, the amount of, you know, more synchronization, and, you know, hopefully some more of those passive permissive lefts, you know, where it makes sense. I know some of them are a challenge, but anyways, especially the Bake and Tribuco widening. That's seriously been like five, six, seven years because I know we had to negotiate with a bunch of different people, and it's right on the board of Irvine, but I'm excited to drive Bake again down there once it's all done, so thank you.
You're welcome.
I echo my colleagues' comments, and having actually just come up Bake Parkway, did experience that, and I drive Alton quite often, and I've noticed a marked improvement, so thank you for that. And then I saw the renovation up in the Normandale Open Space Area. I have not been back in there literally for years, but does that mean they took out the bike jumps?
That's...
The BMX course back there?
Yeah.
Amongst the coastal sage scrub?
We had some brush fire recently, so this is an effort to kind of prevent or, you know, reduce the risk of that happening again. So we did some re-landscaping with more fire resistance or better, better plans, as well as we extended the fence around the perimeter, so we have the enclosure now.
Very good. Well, I appreciate, we all appreciate that. Thank you. And thank you for the report.
Thank you again. As I always bring up, when El Toro Road comes up, I have to ask, and just for consideration, about pedestrian and bike, biker safety and the width there and narrow sidewalks, and just things to take a look at for improving that, that area. I've ridden it on my bike, and it can be a little tough at times. We have great areas other places that I know we've improved, and I know there's challenges in doing it specifically in that area, but that would be wonderful consideration, anything can be done. Thank you again.
You're welcome. We are incorporating green paint, green bike lane paints. Whenever we are doing a new street resurfacing, we make sure we consider that as far as the infrastructure allows us, that the width increase of width for the bike lanes, and incorporating the new green bike lane paint where we have the conflict zone, so hopefully that will help.
I appreciate that. I think that's wonderful. That bridge is a big, is a big challenge there, so.
Yes.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. We will move on to our next presentation. Director Ackerman, will you please introduce this item as well?
Yes, this item is a code enforcement activity report for the first half of 2025, and Lilia Montano, our code enforcement officer, is making her debut to give you that report.
Good evening, members of the Commission. Thank you for having me here tonight. I will be providing an overview of code enforcement activity first half of 2025. Here's a representation of our caseload. We carried over 136 cases from 2024. New cases opened in 2025 is 279. So far, code enforcement has closed 311 cases. We have a remaining 104 cases, reflecting a successful closure rate of 74% of all our cases. These statistics do not reflect the ongoing enforcement of unpermitted vendors. That will be discussed at a later time. As you can see from the bar graph on Slide 3, we have a 24% increase in case closed, cases closed. We attribute our success rate to our two new code officers, which allowed expanded enforcement into weekends and evenings. This pie chart demonstrates the type of complaints code enforcement receives. Property maintenance is the largest category of complaints, ranging from substandard housing to landscape maintenance, followed by public nuisance being the second largest category, which includes noise violations, short-term rentals, and commercial business activity Case election district map, this map illustrates a breakdown of open cases both by election, district, and areas 1 and 2. The area, the two areas of the city are divided at the railroad tracks. The area is closer to the, area 2 is closest to the 5 freeway, it's densely populated, and is an older community. But you can see it carries the same number of cases despite area size. There is also no HOA presence to enforce property maintenance, leading to higher code-related case issues. This next slide will start covering some of our exciting happenings from 2025. Here is an example of substandard living and possible boarding home. Code enforcement received a call about people living in tents in the backyard under substandard conditions. Code enforcement investigation revealed individuals sleeping in the garage, makeshift sheds, under the, and people sleeping under the patio cover. Various electrical hazards such as exposed wiring, extension cords throughout the property. Plumbing issues and unpermitted water heater. Various violations of unpermitted construction throughout the property. A total of 27 beds were found throughout the property. Additionally, the house had bars on the windows which posed issues for ingress and egress in the event of a fire or emergency. The property owner, who also resides at the property, has several health issues and is of limited English proficiency. Recognizing the sensitivity of the situation, code enforcement staff approached the matter with compassion and patience. One of our Spanish-speaking officers explained the violations in clear terms and worked with the owner to identify practical solutions. Staff collaborated with the building department to evaluate safety issues and ensure all necessary repairs and changes met code requirements. Together, they guided the property owner through each step, helping the property owner to bring the home into compliance without unnecessary hardship. Through this collaborative effort, the concerns of neighbors were addressed, overcrowding was eliminated, unsafe sleeping areas removed, the property was restored to a safe and healthy Our neighborhood pop-up, our Neighborhood Improvement Task for pop-up event, this year, city staff initiated its third Neighborhood Improvement Task Force, or NITF, project. You may ask, what is NITF? The Neighborhood Improvement Task Force was established to identify and address neighborhood issues raised by residents. In May, despite rainy weather, NITF successfully hosted a pop-up event in the city's third focus area as part of a larger strategic initiative. The event highlights various booths were run by city staff, CRNR, El Toro Water District, OC Sheriff's, OCFA, SEPTED, and the Boys and Girls Club attended. Over 100 residents attended connecting with agencies and gathering resources. Residents completed the area-wide survey boosting participation. Mayor Pro-Tam and District Council, and District 5 Council member Robert Pequeno attended and engaged the community. The event highlight was a bike rodeo organized by volunteers from Project Bike Love. Interactive course taught young cyclists proper use of safety gear, safe riding practices on streets, and obeying traffic signs. Several children participated, gaining hands-on safety education. And now an update on vendor, on the unpermitted vendors. Over the past several months, code enforcement staff have noticed a decrease in unpermitted street vendor activity. While the trend is encouraging, staff continues to patrol seven days a week, including evening hours to ensure compliance and community safety. When they encounter an unpermitted vendor, they approach, the approach begins with education, explaining the permit process, answering questions, and ensuring the vendor understands the rules, as well as connecting vendors with resources. Vendors are given an opportunity to comply before enforcement when necessary enforcement is carried out, which may include impounding equipment. The balanced approach of education and accountability has resulted in increased compliance and fewer violations. For example, the last half of 2024, we saw seven impoundments, while the first six months of 2025 has only seen one. Second half of the year plans. Some exciting things to look forward to in the second half of 2025. Launch of new Love Lake Forest Initiative. Our consultant Trellis will lead the first community volunteer project. They will assist an elderly couple in the city with landscape maintenance on their property. The first project is scheduled for September 20th in the third NITF project area. Next, food truck ordinance update. The city of Lake Forest has adopted a new food truck ordinance. Staff are developing a streamlined process for vending vehicles to obtain permits through the city. Finally, a large item holloway day in the project area 3. This project will be a collaboration of code enforcement, Public Works, and CRNR. The purpose for the project is to provide a central location for residents to dispose of large items often left on sidewalks. The goal is to improve neighborhood cleanliness and accessibility. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Have we received any comments from members of the public on this item?
I have not received any.
All right, thank you. Do any of the members of the Commission have questions, comments, for discussion?
I do, sir. Lilly, good job.
Thank you.
Sorry I couldn't smile, I was looking up. But I do have a question in regards to the food vendors. Can you maybe articulate why your thoughts are that it's decreased so much? I think I have an idea at hand, but I'd like to see your professional opinion.
Well, I would have to say that we have two code enforcement officers that were hired for the purpose of enforcing vendors. Also, the height of the climate in today's America is happening, so I wouldn't say one or the other, but for sure, I'd like to give props to our code enforcement officers who are out there enforcing and staying safe, keeping our community clean.
No doubt. Definitely was something that, for the health and safety purpose, that we wanted to make sure that everyone was safe and healthy. Today at a SCAG meeting, they talked about this, and regionally, there's been a significant decrease in that just all over, and I think it was because of that reason. But not to say that the other work that isn't being done isn't also helping too, so just keeping finger on a pulse so we don't let that kind of creep back up to where it was back in '24, so that's all I have. Thank you.
And I'll just restate what I said to you informally earlier, and that is, you know, thank you to you and the, and code enforcement staff for all that you do. It's, it's been a part of our discussions on several items that have appeared on our agenda of late, and so it's great to hear that code enforcement is out in force, keeping us safe and such. So, so thank you for the efforts and then the results, so that's significant, seeing the increase of the closure rates. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think the work you guys are doing is so critical, and the fact that you're addressing it so compassionately is so welcoming and heartwarming for me to hear. So thank you for keeping our city safe and as vibrant as we wanted to continue to be.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That was a great report. Good stuff. I love Love Lake Forest. That was, that was, I've been looking for that, so that's great. At the beginning, before the meeting started, I had told you you had some big shoes to fill in this evening in your first presentation, and you did exactly that, so thank you. At this time, members of the public may address the Commission regarding matters not on the agenda and within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person. If you would like to make a comment, please fill out a speaker card and submit it to the Commission Secretary. The speaker cards are available at the Agenda Review Table at the entrance. Madam Commission Secretary, have we received any speaker cards for non-agendized items?
I have not received any this evening.
Right, well, thank you. This is a time for the Commission to consider matters listed under the Consent Calendar. Have we received any comments from members of the public on the Consent Calendar?
None received.
All right. Do any Commissioners wish to discuss this item, or is there a motion to approve the Consent Calendar?
I'll move it.
Second.
All right.
That motion passes unanimously with Chair Ludden absent.
Wonderful, thank you. I will now open the public hearing for Item 4, and Director Ackerman will introduce this item as well.
Thank you. This is a use permit for the construction of a new one-story self-storage building located on Aspen Street, and Jennifer Mansour, our senior planner, has a report this evening.
Good evening, Vice Chair and Commissioners. This item before you tonight is a use permit for a new self-storage building at the existing self-storage facility on Aspen. The existing self-storage facility was constructed in the 1980s and includes five single-story storage buildings. Each storage unit within the building is accessed by a roll-up door. The existing self-storage facility is comprised of two parcels, does not have any street frontage, and takes access from Aspen via an easement through the adjacent property. This is shown on the red dash line in the graphic. The facility is secured by a wall and vehicular gates, which remain open during business hours, which are Monday through Sunday, 8:30 to 5:30. Upon entering the facility, there are parking stalls and an office. The office is open during normal business hours and typically has one to three employees. There are security armed barriers at the entrance and the exit to the self-storage units, which are shown at the orange stars, and they're open by card keys that are only provided to customers. The site is also encumbered by two easements, which are shown on the green and blue dash lines, which restrict construction over these easements. The proposed project is a request to construct a new one-story self-storage building at the rear of the property, which is shown in blue on the graphic, which will have 36 storage units. The new building will match the colors, materials, and appearance of the other self-storage buildings at the site, and the new building will not be visible from public view. They're also proposing a new eight-foot wide loading area in front of the new building, which will accommodate parking for vehicles directly adjacent to the self-storage units. An additional four parking stalls are proposed in the area adjacent to the building, which is circled in red. The placement of the new building will require the removal of seven trees and approximately 8,000 square feet of landscaping from the existing rear landscape slope. New landscaping, including four new trees, 15 shrubs, and ground cover will be added at the rear of the building. Lastly, as part of this project, the applicant is proposing a lot line adjustment to merge the two existing parcels. A condition of approval is included in the resolution requiring that this lot line adjustment be approved by our engineering division prior to issuance of permits for this project. The proposed building does extend into the existing landscape slope at the north side of the property, which slopes down to the Los Alises Water Recycling Plant. As shown on this cross-section, the rear of the proposed building requires a retaining wall at the north elevation of the building that will be a maximum of 12 and 1/2 feet in height. The retaining wall will face the Los Alises Water Recycling Plant and will not be visible from public view. The project is located in our Mixed Use 43 Zoning District in the Lake Forest Plan Community, which requires a use permit for the development of a new storage building. As shown on the table on the screen, the project is in compliance with all the city's zoning development standards. Furthermore, the loading area in front of the building will provide sufficient parking for the new storage units, and the project is in compliance with our city's water efficiency landscape ordinance. Accordingly, the project as conditioned is in compliance with the city's zoning code. The project has also been reviewed by staff and is in compliance with all applicable general plan policies, citywide design guidelines, and will maintain compatibility with the surrounding industrial and office uses. citywide design guidelines, and will maintain compatibility with the surrounding industrial and office uses. Accordingly, staff is recommending the planning commission approve the use permit and adopt the corresponding resolution. The property owner for this project is in the audience tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Have we received any comments from members of the public on this item?
I have not received any.
All right. Do any members of the commission have questions or comments?
I just have one, and that is, the retaining wall and wall combined, you said 24 and a half feet tall, and, and again, you said was out of sight of public views, so.
Right, it'd be about 24 and a half feet, and actually, the building height in this zoning district is up to 65 feet. So, it's still much shorter than it would be, is allowed there, but yeah. So, from the rear, but only if you're at the recycling plant, I think, would you see it.
So, no visual impacts. Thank you.
Yes.
I just have a question, Mr. Chair, in regards to the parking. So, those additional spots, is, is that part of the formula to determine how many spots are necessary based on the additional storage units that are being built?
Yeah, so, our code basically says that the director can determine how many parking spaces are necessary, and we thought that, due to the fact that, and if you look at this facility, there's actually only eight parking stalls now for the entire site. Everyone parks in front of their space. So, we worked with them to provide that loading area in front of the space and still meet all of the fire requirements, which actually is part of what pushed the building back a little further, because just practically, if you put parking stalls at a self-storage facility, people are still going to park in front of it. So, we have it so that they could beat both the width for the OCFA and then our eight feet. And so, it is our.
So, if someone has parked it in front of their unit, which I guess makes sense when you're loading and unloading storage, that there's still enough room for a fire engine to go through?
Yeah, so it has the OCFA requirements plus our eight feet.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I visited there to go take a look at how they're going to put that building. Not a big slope. That's a lot of work. I'll have to talk to you about how they do that afterwards. I know you have an idea. So, and they were very friendly, and if, if you have stuff to store, I'd, I'd suggest taking a look there, so. All righty, let me see where we are. Hold on, do, okay, we are going to, any members of, okay, I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to consider approving the item as recommended by staff?
I'll move. I'll second.
All right, then let's vote.
That motion pass, the motion passes unanimously with Chair Ludden absent.
Perfect. I'll now open the public hearing for Item 5, and Director Ackerman, you're up again, ma'am.
Yes, Item 5 is a use permit for the operation of an indoor athletic facility and the construction of a building addition, and Jennifer has a report on this project as well.
Hello again. This item before you tonight is a use permit for a new athletic facility with building additions and site improvements at an existing industrial building on Terracita Way. The existing building was constructed in the 1990s, and the existing site is surrounded by large trees that screen the site from Terracita Way and Lake Forest Drive. It appears that the building has been vacant for a while, and the site has not been well-maintained. As shown in the photo, the existing parking lot has cracks and grass growing out of them, and the parking lot striping has faded. This project is a request for the operation of a table tennis indoor athletic facility in conjunction with the American Headquarters Office for the World Table Tennis Management Group, World Table Tennis, and the International Table Tennis Federation. These organizations are the professional governing bodies that manage and promote table tennis tournaments all over the world. This location will be the first headquarters office in the United States. The building will be primarily utilized as an office with approximately 20 to 25 employees. However, it is anticipated that when there are table tennis tournaments in the United States, the professional table tennis athletes, coaches, officials, and sponsors will visit this headquarters building prior to the event. The majority of the first floor plan has been designed to create a space for these visitors. Since most of these visitors will be from other countries, they anticipate that most of the athletes will be transported via large vans to the facility from local hotels. As shown on the floor plan, there are seven table tennis courts and a warm-up area for athletes to train and warm up before a tournament. There are also showers and a showroom area. The showroom area will be the players lounge area and will display trophies, sponsor products, and displays about table tennis. The photos on the screen are photos of a similar showroom they have in their Beijing office. It's important to note that this facility will not be open to the public, and there will be no table tennis lessons or tournaments at this facility. This project also includes building additions and site improvements to the site. As shown on the plan on your screen, the red area is a new two-story, approximately 5,000-square-foot addition, and the area in blue is a smaller, approximately 600-square-foot interior second-floor addition for, for new restrooms. The project also includes the construction of a new trash enclosure, shown in orange, the addition of new parking stalls, and some new landscape islands in the parking lot. Furthermore, the applicant has proposed to slurry seal the entire parking lot area and restripe all the parking stalls. The new addition features multiple materials, including glass, fiber cement accent panel that gives the appearance of redwood, and a smooth plaster painted white. A metal canopy is proposed on both elevations, which will break up the tall expanse of the glass. The project also includes an enhancement to the existing main entrance to the building, including that faux redwood border around the entrance and a glass top canopy. In accordance with the city's design guidelines, the architecture of the new addition is compatible with the architecture of the existing building, and the building design of the addition provides variations in materials and colors to create visual interest. The proposed project site is zoned light industrial, or M1 zone, and based on the business operations, staff has determined that the proposed business is both an administrative office and an indoor athletic facility. Per the city's code, the administrative offices are allowed by right, but the indoor athletic facility requires the planning commission approval of a use permit. The building addition and new parking stalls are all in compliance with the applicable zoning requirements. In addition, as shown on the screen, the use will meet the city's parking requirements. Lastly, the project has been reviewed by staff. It is in compliance with all applicable general plan policies and the citywide design guidelines. The project site is surrounded by light industrial and office buildings and the Baker Ranch Plaza Shopping Center. The proposed office headquarters and table tennis training facility will be located within the building, and the use is consistent with the city's parking requirements. The operation of the business is not expected to generate traffic, noise, odors, or other impacts that would be inconsistent with the surrounding businesses. Staff is recommending three conditions of approval that we've typically applied to some similar indoor athletic facilities, and I'm just paraphrasing them, but all business activities need to be inside the building. The roll-up doors need to remain closed when they're using, when they're doing the table tennis training. And if at any time the city determines the parking doesn't accommodate the project's parking demand, the applicant shall initiate measures to rectify the parking shortage. Accordingly, staff is recommending the planning commission approve this use permit and adopt the corresponding resolution. The applicant for this project is in the audience tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Here we go again. Have we received any comments from members of the public?
None received.
All right, thank you. Now, did the applicant would like to speak, or?
He is here to answer any questions. He didn't want to speak unless he needed to.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Does anybody, commissioners, have any questions, comments, or the likes? Mr. Barra, Commissioner Barajas?
I just think this is a cool project, and thank you for bringing it to us, and I look forward to supporting it.
Can I, Chair?
Please.
So, this is really exciting, coming to Lake Forest. I'm, I'm excited about the economic impacts that this could potentially have. We have some hotels. Hopefully, this brings in, you know, more food, more hotels. Choosing us as headquarters is awesome. It's a little disappointed I can't play table tennis there, because I actually am a pretty awesome table tennis player, but I don't think I'm at that world-class level yet, so. I don't know, maybe I'll have to sneak in or something, but anyways, really exciting. I think it looks nice. I think there's plenty of parking. I think it's too much, to be honest. The in-and-out doesn't even require that much, and I don't think we're going to have nearly, yes, exactly, so. Not worried about it. I don't even think it needs to add the four, but it's good enough, so I'm good.
So, I know the location, I know the building, I know the condition, and this is a vast improvement to what's there now, so. So, we appreciate that very much. I did have, and I echo the comments from my colleagues here as well, so I will believe in that. However, just one question. So, there's, there's no lessons, there's no general public time? So, it's all club members, or, or people coming from, you know, guests, invitees from around the world to, to come here and play?
Yeah, just the athletes, the professional athletes that play.
Which I know is a, is a, is a big deal, so I, I agree. This is, this is a definite improvement to, again, to this location and to the city, so we appreciate that very much. I look forward to supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have to tell you, I had a little disappointment as well when I read this, because I thought, I saw table tennis, and I was like, maybe Lake Forest has a shot at the 2026 Olympics, and then I read, no tournaments, and I was like, my bubble was burst. But we're excited to have you here. Thank you so much, and thank you, Jennifer, for the heavy lifting you did on this. All right. So, I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to consider approving the item as recommended by staff?
So moved.
Second.
All right, let's vote.
The motion passes unanimously with Chair Ludden absent.
Wonderful, thank you. Now is the time for the director's comments.
I have no comments this evening.
Oh, a little lackluster, but that's okay. I'm just DCing. I'm sorry. Does the city attorney have any comments?
No comments, but glad to be back.
We're glad to have you back, and congratulations again on the baby.
First time, first time dad.
I know, I know.
Thank you.
And a girl dad at that. I'm a four-time girl dad. I'm a happy guy. Welcome to the club. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Grable?
I can't believe summer's over. Almost.
All right. Commissioner Barajas?
No comment this evening, thank you.
And Commissioner Villawak?
Thank you. I was waiting to be called on. I actually have something I'd like to share that's actually really cool, and it's kudos to staff, and I received an email, so. They wrote it to me and Amy, but it's really Amy and staff. I don't know why he's appreciating me. I didn't do anything, but he did nonetheless. And he was talking about that he can't be more appreciative of the professionalism and responsiveness throughout the process, specifically as they were tackling a tough situation. This is the individual that's opening up the pickleball courts that are indoor, just on the other side. Talked about how he reached out to the city manager and the senior planner, talked just outstandingly about Ron and how integral and helping he's been to bringing this project to life. Talked about the building official as well, and just thought that everybody was extremely fair and provided constructive advice that made him walk slowly towards the finish line. Considering all those circumstances, it is the best that we could have asked for. So, I wanted to make sure that that gets shared publicly, and that it's always nice to hear that. Not that I'm typically the outlet for kudos, but I thought that that was awesome to share, so. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Oh, so I want to say thank you to everybody for making tonight a very good meeting. It was wonderful. I also want to, and easy for me, for the first time I've actually had to do that, so thank you for not giving me a hard one. Also wanted to share that I went to the Taste of Lake Forest, and it was a wonderful event. It's the first time I've gone. I did not go last year, and I saw a lot of folks here that were, that were there, and then I saw just a lot of other people, and a lot of people having good food and good times, and I recommend that people, if you got the little coupon book and you went, use those coupons. Other than that, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting and state that our next regular meeting is scheduled for October 9th, 2025, and we'll look forward to seeing everyone there.